I was supposed to be missed. I did not read this letter into the record yet. So going backwards, April 7th, 2017, it will make concern. I go the cake of 206 Water District, Quincy, and oppose the expansion plans and patio underway by Mark Pono, Cagney's Restaurant, inclusive of the newly proposed Pore Yard Restaurant, Bar and Patio. These alterations have direct impact on quality of mine and my family's life and greatly infringes on our rights to the quiet environment as soon as I do eat cake. Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I do understand there were some people that didn't understand your prior announcement.
Yes, so let's, I'm certainly will go back and say this. This is not the usual presentation to the board. Usually people have something denied and then they come here. This case is a little bit different. It's the exact opposite. Here, we didn't deny something because we didn't hear something. And someone wants us to do something, okay, which is different. And so it's a little confusing, but there are two different sides here. And every side has a right to speak publicly. So just for ease, if you are in favor of getting rid of the patio, come speak. Please.
Anybody that wants to speak on the side can line up. If there's just one, good.
Hi, Marina Salinas. I live in the first floor apartment. And my bedroom window is, and I did measure it, it is exactly four feet, four inches from that fence. I live alone. It's a one-bedroom apartment. I never got the letters, by the way. Thank you. There was never anything sent to us to go to any prior hearings of whether this should be done or it shouldn't be done. If we were opposed, or I would have been opposed from the very beginning. And just to clarify a few things about what he said. I'm sorry, but in 1920, one in 32 households had a car. That's why there is nothing about cars in 1920. Also, it wasn't a driveway for a dumpster. It was for the tenants who lived above the cabin. Because I was kind and I would say hi to many doors. So I know there were their vehicles. There was two. They're both white. One of them was a very nice Volvo, so I really want Volvo. My issue is, I am four feet away from this. You can see right into my window, into my bedroom window. This isn't my living room. This isn't my kitchen. This is my bedroom window. How safe do you think I feel that there's people that can look into my bedroom window? Knowing how close they can just jump over that fence and break into. Especially now that it's summer, which the window will be open to get some air in, someone can just break in. They can just see and look and say, hey, she has fancy stuff. Let's go in and get it. You didn't think about that when you were building your patio. I'm okay with daytime stuff, but at night, I live alone. I feel safer if I knew that people weren't getting drunk right next four feet away from my window that could come and vandalize my place, or even come and park behind our parking spots, because we have parking behind, and just take the parking. Because there's no parking in the street or in wherever there's other parking. Because people are like that. People are just gonna park wherever they feel like, even though it's this private property everywhere. And we have this problem all the time. People just come, teenagers that park in the back, and I have to remind them, this is private property. And they're just like, oh, sorry, and they leave. I'm not gonna say that to someone who's drunk, living by myself, to a man, I'm not gonna tell him, please leave. Because they might be telling you. So I don't feel safe. Why should I have to leave my home where I've been for three years just because he felt like putting up a patio? Which, by the way, you should have been there for the building of this patio. Six in the morning, the most awful sounds, starting at six in the morning. Mind you, yes, I have to wake up for work, but I don't know about you guys, I don't like to wake up to that sound. And it wasn't just Monday through Friday, it was also on Saturdays, when you should be able to wake up at eight or nine. No, you have to wake up at six, because they were working for three weeks straight. I know it would have been nice. Lawyer? We didn't get any.
Speak to the board, please.
Sorry. We didn't get any. And even Mr. Chenet asked, did you get a letter to go to this hearing? No. He asked three times, because we were supposed to get three. And I was like, no. There was nothing in our box. So I don't understand, but my concern is my safety. I'm not here about boards and I don't know laws. I'm from Texas, I know Texas laws. I don't know Massachusetts laws.
You have laws in Massachusetts.
I'm sorry?
You have laws in Texas.
I know. Or it's stricter, by the way. You can't have a bar 200 yards away from a living residence. So they're stricter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
This is against or for?
We're still on the waiting.
Okay. Are you going to speak? You can go first. Go forward.
Hi, my name's Stephanie Sullivan. I live on 34 Edgird Street, which our backyard, you can see Cagneys from it. And just with the patio, just for noise, I mean, we can hear, we're on another street and we can hear it, we have a thing from outside the patio. So just the noise disturbance, we have a thing. My husband and I wake up early in the morning for work and to hear music and the people outside the patio in charge, just a big noise disturbance. So that's our real concern against it. So just quickly.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, did you get nervous of the hand?
Um, I don't believe so.
David Conti, 48, Whitney Road. I was here for the licensing meeting. And in all due respect to Mr. Fleming, who's a lot smarter than me, I don't think that this venue is being used as any type of way to get around disappointment on Mr. Chenet's behalf in regards to licensing. If the zoning board meeting had failed before the licensing, you'd have the same crowd in front of you. So that's just point number one. He had spoken to me and a lot of friends that support the Chenets over the years, and it just seemed like that licensing board meeting was getting crammed in and the zoning should have happened. I looked at all of you folks tonight and Mr. McRitchie's seven points, even if he's not correct on all seven, I think we have some zoning issues here that somehow Cagneys was able to dance around. I watched your faces looking at things that, so-called signs, lights. It's a great effort by Mr. DeBona to brighten up the place, but in regards to the proximity of the tenants, and the young lady who's just here, the lights, the noise, and et cetera, the closeness of the fence, which is probably three or four feet off the house, is gonna be an issue for Mr. Chenet, because it's gonna drive his tenants out. And as he made a comment, it's his retirement. He planned on that retirement for that setup. It'd be nice if something could be worked out, if the patio could be chunk in size, if hours could be worked out, because it is an odd, it is an odd case where Cagneys, then the patio, then back to the poorhouse, then the patio gets connected to the poorhouse, you know, licensing wise. So just those two points. I think the zoning issues are here. I don't know why or how he could buy zoning to start with. That's the first point. And the second point, in no way are they using this venue to try to be disappointed over the license. They would have loved to have a zoning board meeting way ahead of that licensing meeting because Mr. Duca was there that night and the chief and Chief Barron, and the questions were geared towards licensing. But Mr. Chenet had no alternative but to kind of make a case so he could get here that there was an issue at Cagneys on Washington Street. Thank you.
John O'Driscoll, 62 Grand Mall Road. I just want to make one point on when it comes to license board meetings, sometimes on the agenda, they have items that aren't even on the agenda, that are posted on the public board, and they'll hear items that you didn't even know were gonna be on the agenda. So the license board doesn't always post all items on the agenda. So for property notices, was there twice at two different times, so, you know, the public did have a chance to speak out. I actually spoke out in favor of it the first time, because he spoke like he was gonna be part of Cagneys. But it isn't. They haven't been straight with what they've been doing the whole time. I don't understand. You have to be fair to everyone in the city. You can't treat some people and give them all sorts of extra benefits, which is what Mr. DeBona has gotten many, many, many times. Okay? Comes up here for special, not really here, but to the license board, even before this, he's had many asks at the license board. So from what you're saying, anyone can come to the city and open up a restaurant and you don't need any parking? Is that correct? So can I open up a restaurant anywhere and you don't need any parking requirements to open up a restaurant? I mean, I was floored at that license meeting myself. I was like, why isn't this ad zoning? So this is ad zoning right now. So I mean, if you, the license, the zoning board, you would have said, put a fence up. You would have made them put a fence up if you did grant them the variance. But they weren't granted a variance. They actually weren't granted a variance by the license board. And the license board doesn't grant variances. The zoning board grants variances. And no variance has been asked for and no variance has been granted, yet they have the benefit of a variance. This sets a horrible precedent for the city of Quincy. And we're here today because you guys are gonna make it right, okay? And let them do what everyone else has to do to make it fair to everyone. It's not about who donates money to who or who supports who. It's about do the right thing, okay? And the right thing here is the peace and quiet of those tenants. No one should have a bar within a foot of their residence. I mean, it just shouldn't happen. I know the zoning board wouldn't allow that ever in any other situation, okay? So please stand up for, you know, they're not saving cancer, they're serving alcohol, okay? We have enough places in Quincy that serve alcohol. You don't have to save a place to a poor, that's actually what they call the poor place or whatever, but please, I'm confused what I'm even asking for right now. I'm asking to just, you know, deny that patio from anyone drinking on there ever again. Let the people, if they're gonna drink, do it inside so children don't have to walk by and see them drinking alcohol. Thank you.
Anybody who wants to speak on the other side of that issue now? And if you're gonna speak opposed, just come up now, because I do wanna go there.
Jeff Hines, 197 Elm Street, Quincy Center Neighborhood Association. I'm not speaking for or against it. I think there's some, I think there's some, well, do you want me to wait? I was confused the way you called people up.
So am I.
There's some points of clarification, though. I think, well, first of all, I wish they could get together for the sake of everyone and maybe work on the parking and stuff, but there were four businesses there originally. There was a tailor, a barber shop, then Cagneys, which way back was Phil's and there was a couple of restaurants, but this goes way back. And then there was Republic, had the place on the corner. So there were four businesses there, not three. And there's, but they were small businesses. And that, and then this, which was Convenience Store, whatever, they started serving food and that's how, I guess, they got the four seats. I'm not bothering them on that. But parking is a huge issue, but I commend Mark. He's done a great job with his property. I think he runs a good show. The place looks good, everything. But Mr. Chenet has fixed up his building too. His building looks great. So, you know, we're trying to do something that works for everyone. Maybe if the cities in the business of buying parking lots now, like they are down the neck, maybe they can buy a parking lot there and everyone can win. I don't know, I don't think that'll happen, but that would be a solution for the neighborhood. But as far as the parking, parking is a huge issue right now, because the delivery trucks used to sometimes use that area where the dumpster driver, whatever you wanna call it. Now you've got them double parking out on Washington Street, so that is a problem. But I understand the business was there for a long time. I don't know what the solution is, but I think it's something that has to be thought of. And then it's very confusing with how many seats there are, because this whole letter that went out was very confusing to begin with. And the way I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe, which was Republic Plumbing, which is now the function room, I believe that has 75 seats. So then the restaurant, I don't know how many it has, and then you're gonna put 24 more seats in next door than with the patio, I mean, how many people we?
I'm not putting any seats, that's the license.
Okay, well, it's just, well, the reason it's confusing is how many, how many more cars are we gonna have for the neighborhood? But then again, the businesses was there beforehand, I understand that, and he's done a good job. But if you go back to 1920, or like they said, most people were walking, so it's a different, I don't know what the solution is, but maybe unless they could work out something with other neighborhood businesses to park there. So just my point, thank you.
Thank you. So one person wants to speak?
Last place.
Have a good night, guys. Wild talk. Let's do it.
Good evening. My name is James Schindler. I'm a real estate professional in Quincy. I work for Boston Premier Properties. We do focus a lot, mainly on rental property. Just want to speak briefly on the marketability of rental property in and around Washington Street, primarily north of Pond Street. All those reside within half a mile to six tenths of a mile of Quincy Center T. It's my experience that any apartment, specifically one bedrooms, that do become within the ability to walk to a train station, very rarely stay available. I can totally appreciate his existing tenants not loving the idea, but his inability to rent that property moving forward, in my opinion, would be very easy for him to rent that if his tenants chose to leave. Simply because one bedrooms with the ability to walk to a train are in high demand and aren't always in short supply. So again, what you're seeing in Quincy Center, they're getting exuberant amounts of rent because those people can walk to a tee, to entertainment, to dining, to shopping. On a smaller scale, north of Pond Street and Washington Street offers the same ability to people who maybe have one car or no cars. They can dine, they can shop, they can walk to banking, they can walk to public transportation. So it's my feeling that if his, unfortunately, if his tenants chose to leave, I feel his ability to rent that property would still be intact. Thank you so much.
Can I just make a question, Mr. DeBona?
Sure.
Hello, my name's Kerry Byrne. I'm hospitality, public relations, business development consultant for the city of Quincy, primarily focused on the downtown redevelopment. Before that, I spent 25 years covering the food and restaurant industry for the Boston Herald Publications all over the country. And, you know, what you learned over that time is that restaurants, places to eat and drink and meet friends and neighbors are essential to the quality of life, the livability in the image of different communities. And the reality is, for a long time, Quincy, I'm a lifelong Quincy resident, lagged behind other satellite communities around Boston, that image. We weren't seen as a great place to go out and enjoy yourself and have a nice meal and enjoy yourselves and go back home and whatnot. And, you know, we've seen, we've seen what the gentrification has done in Quincy Center with all the new restaurants, people all over Boston now are talking about, hey, let's go to Quincy E. It's bringing a lot of business, it's bringing new visitors, it's improving the image of the city. And Mr. DeBona, thanks to his own creative energy, his own personal financial risk, has done a great, great job revitalizing that end of Washington Street, running right on the edge of Quincy Center. I think Mr. Chenet himself said at one point, the building we're talking about was a check caching facility and, you know, the space of that projects a certain image, and it's not necessarily a desirable image. When the Pore Yard opens, assuming that Mr. DeBona gets a patio, it's gonna be a much more desirable place to live. It's gonna make that neighborhood look like a better place to live, to visit, and I actually think it's gonna end up improving real estate values for Mr. Chenet and everyone else around there. And it just makes Quincy a better place, and I think we should applaud Mr. DeBona and support him for putting his personal risk in improving the city of Quincy. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I've got a call up on the meeting closed after. After, actually, you want to?
I said, go ahead, Jay, first.
He said it was closed. Too late.
No, I can see.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record. Jay Duca, Director of Inspeccial Services. Just want to make a couple of clarifications and give a little history on what the license board did. The advocate before the license board, after a ground swell of support from the neighborhood, the license board voted 5-0 to allow the patio extension. The city of Quincy encourages these types of venues. They're all over the city. License board has permitted many of these extensions without zoning review or permits. These are seasonal uses. They are all over the city. I chose, in this case, not to make any finding or zoning opinion, as I did with dozens of others. This patio is an improvement over what was there before. It wasn't uncommon that people were out there smoking, the dumpster was there, it was pretty dilapidated. In all accounts, it could still be used for its intended purpose where it was. I don't want to confuse the issue anymore, or you've heard a lot about subdivision and all that stuff. The fact of the matter is, this patio is existing. It's an accessory use, and it always has been, to these, both these venues. The loss of two parking spaces, I felt, was de minimis, because there's plenty of on-street parking. This was the testimony that we received at the license board, that there was never a problem with parking. Again, there was much neighborhood support. The appellant was there and opposed to it, but again, with overwhelming support, we decided to approve that. A couple of things Mr. McRitchie talked about that I will try to clarify for the board. He talked about eating places primarily in enclosed structures. Primarily, it doesn't preclude that it could be open, just for the board's information. It's not exclusive, not limited to an enclosed structure, it just means primarily enclosed. Secondly, is the subdivision, when it was done, it didn't change the building, it didn't change the use, it didn't change anything. It just subdivided the lots and made separate lots. So this venue and the accessory use have existed for a long time. So just wanted to let the board know that we made these kind of decisions in the past, we will continue to make them. We don't make any zoning reviews on them, they're seasonal uses. I would ask the board, I know Councilor Forrest is gonna speak, I would ask the board, now that I've got more information from both sides, I would ask the board to continue the case before they decide it tonight, so that it'll give me an opportunity to meet with all the parties for the next two weeks to try to find some common ground. Thank you.
One second. Could you clarify the sign issue that Attorney McRitchie brought up?
Yes, and thank you for asking that. I have to tell you that as a license board member, my view and what I thought was gonna happen was not what I see in the pictures that you see today. I don't know if you've seen those pictures, if they're in your packet. I intend fully to address the fencing, the lighting, the music, the signage. I intend to address that. And most importantly, I intend to address any noise. I have not had any noise complaints. I've been told by the appellant that there's been noise complaints. I have not received any. But I can tell you, I enforce the noise ordinance in the city as the zoning administrator. I intend fully to make sure that there's no noise. The license board, we have strict guidelines on noise, and we have, we have ways to deal with that quickly and immediately. We can pull that extension at any time. So I intend this to be a quiet place, that people can enjoy a drink in the evening during the season. That was what I was sold on, and I won't speak for my other license board members, but that was pretty much what the presentation was back then. So again, I would ask you to continue this note over tonight and continue to give me an opportunity to meet with the neighbors.
What was the first question? I have one more for you.
Sure.
And you touched on, was there any restrictions in the licensing approval for the lighting, the hours, probably not zoning related, but more out of curiosity of the big picture, what's extremely confusing, complicated matter?
Yes, yes. The license board, all the venues that we have licensed for extended patios, very critical low lighting, either no music or very low music. It just, especially next to residential areas which we have. Hours, I think, were limited, and I don't know, I don't have that in front of me. It was limited. I think it was either 10 or 11 o'clock.
11.
11.
11.
No TVs.
No TVs. So the license board is very, you know, we're, we understand it's next to residential property. That was one of the reasons they put the fence, to help mitigate that noise. But we do have tight controls over that, and we're able to monitor that very closely and not very quickly on that licensing extension.
Thank you, Mr. Duca. Want you? Mr. Chairman, I didn't hear a response to the question about the sign, though. What kind of sign is it?
That's, there will be no sign like that. They are entitled to a sign. I'll be glad to look at any sign application they want to submit, and if it meets the Quincy sign orders, that'll be something I can approve.
Just to address that as well, I'm sorry, Mr. Duca, that was a temporary sign that's been removed, there's no intention of replacing, of replacing that sign with a new restaurant name?
Thank you.
Good evening. Margaret Forrest, Board Member, Councillor, for the record. I just wanted to kind of go through, as you know, before you were frequent flyers of the board, and as the patio began, when it was originally to be part of Cagneys, prior to the breakfast place leaving, Councillor Cole and I hosted a neighborhood meeting. That letter went out to an expanded vital list, I can provide that to you, it was hundreds. It was the residents along Washington, on Board One side, which is Cagney's side, crowded the other, no ones attended. We then, that was in advance of, let's explain what's gonna happen with the patio prior to the licensing board. So that letter gave two opportunities, one, come to the neighborhood meeting, two, come to the license board. So just want to be clear, kind of, as we triggered this off, the outreach, maybe you subscribe to my newsletter, it was out in there, some social media, and I felt, which is a lot of outreach, and they oftentimes receive complacency as, we're happy with what's happening. If we're gonna hear opposition, it's very loud and clear. The Pore Yard, with the inside-outside ratio, was something that Mr. McRitchie referenced, and I think Mr. Duca recognized it as well, is a seasonal use. So mostly, the patios are in accessory use, however, that doesn't preclude them from saying, I'm gonna operate a seasonal business with mostly weather dependency on an exterior patio. I can give thought as to who else is doing that. So it came to mind, Tony's in Clambox probably have more outside seating than inside seating, they're seasonal uses. Matilda's has, has anything inside, didn't open it in a few years, but has that, more seats outside. So I do see precedent for, while we are thinking inside, typically, New England, you're not gonna run a business with your primary use being outside in such a small seasonal window. If that's a financial risk Mr. DeBona wants to take, he can pursue that. On the side yard setback, another concern is that Mr. Duca and I work on this and have been here with various boards for different projects. Right off the bat, the other restaurants operating in our city within their setbacks, Inward One, a patio that I was involved with permitting through the licensing board, Rosafa, another one, Louis. Both of these are right up against, within their setbacks. And then I kind of thought citywide, Hancock Tavern, Same Deal, Assembly, Same Dale, The Shanti, The Townsend, Father House, Craig's Cafe, The Fours, all of them, all of those outdoor patio dining options are within that setback. And in some cases, like Craig's Cafe, it's on the city sidewalk. So I feel that, well, I understand Mr. Duca has had the same process, and we went through this as they each came forward, so sure, well, Louis, you're not building, there's nothing to issue a building permit for. Doing a patio is considered landscaping, that's not a building permit issuance, it is not something constructed within that setback. And Mr. Duca has been very consistent, in my opinion, in all, in every single one of those Board One projects I've been involved in. I did want to make note, the signage being temporary, that was a very big sign, bigger than what's, I think that the sponsor provided the sign to him, and there it was, and there's this big wall. Good for Republic to be such a neighbor, to allow them to put something up, but I agree, signage is bigger, and I think they'll be looking at something. The patio, as you know, came together very quick last year at the end of the season, so he opened it just as the season was ending. I do want to make note about the business B zoning and the underlying zoning for the area, while I have a lot of respect, and I do want to get, for Marina, your contact information, so I can stay in touch with you, because I do have outreach opportunities to connect with you. It is a business B zone, so the primary use is business, the secondary use is residential. As we're developing the city, and we are putting forward these mixed-use projects. So I just wanted to kind of give that understanding, is that's the leading use, is the business use, and we do want to see business development occur in the city of Quincy. I think that prior to him opening the patio, Mark shared with me, there'd been some undesirables in the area, and what he was trying to avoid by removing that dumpster, by going with the nightly trash service, by cleaning the area up, he's really made a significant He's really made a significant investment in proving. On the noise complaint, I have to tell you, of those patios I referenced, I have never myself eaten one or has complained from a patio. I think it's a particularly popular trend. I know myself as a diner, I'm moving forward, I'm sitting out there, spoken to many Cagney's customers who also are excited to see this new venture come online. But I do want the missing us particularly to know, 479-1212 Quincy Police Non-E urgency Line, they're glad to field your phone calls and they're glad to be responsive, but not one of those patios that we talked about has any noise complaints and we want to make sure that the neighbors do know who to call in case they have an issue because we want to resolve it. The other point, I think it was the most important for me, this speaks to the character of Mr. DeBona as an operator. When we came to the licensing board last year for the 26th anniversary, the 25th anniversary last year of Cagney's, Chief Keenan had lauded Mr. DeBona's operation. In 25 years as an operator, there had not been one violation that had caused him to present himself to the licensing board. The only time he had been there was when he applied for his license to operate his business and then he applied for an extension of premises for the anniversary party. And, you know, I really have seen when he purchased this building, he invested in the exterior, he invested in the interior, invested in the food and beverage, quality of service. And he's really providing a great business to our community. His corporate citizenship, Attorney Fleming referenced, this business is a powerhouse for charity within our community. The Toys for Tots, I don't know if you've been to his holiday gathering, but not only is he, it's the biggest in southeastern Massachusetts, the biggest Toys for Tots drive that we have in southeastern Massachusetts. That's a huge caption area. His customers go out, they donate money leading up to it, they go shopping and the place is packed and they really provide the service. Relay for Life in Quincy started there, the Quincy Fire Department and the breast cancer work they do, they utilize Cagney's as a resource. So so many times, time and time again, good corporate citizen, you ask him to step up for something for the neighborhood, he's very consistent in all of this, they aren't asking for nothing. The other most important thing for me is, can we find what we need? If there's an issue, do I know where to get? He's always very accessible, he's in his business, that's why he has such a good operation, he's always very responsive to me. So I feel, while the zoning appealed before you, I'm comfortable with the decision that Mr. Duca made. Quite often when we talk about findings, you and I have these, have conversations about what is the vibe of the neighborhood. So tonight, I want to not only express my support, the application for, or the lack of application, but my support for Cagney's and their improvements that they're making. I also need to express on behalf of Counselor Noel DeBona, his support as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'm kind of surprised that the parties came here only four of us. See, I would have thought that they would have asked for, you know, until five, four minutes. But I think that this is one of the situations where they're doing that much, because it's going to get appealed no matter what we say. And so that month, I would think that I go along with Mr. Duca's idea, which is give these people a couple more weeks to try to figure this out and then come back to us. Coward's whale, maybe, but that's why I'm with that.
I would have to agree with you. I think that they should get together, that we should give an opportunity to do that. They should try to see whether there's common ground. We're in an awkward situation here where this is our first oppression, here in this case, and I'd be more comfortable letting them have an opportunity to do that.
Thank you. Two weeks sounds fine.
Yeah, I mean, both sides obviously are tremendous members of this community, business-wise, personal-wise. I'm disappointed that there hasn't been more interaction among the two to try to figure this out. Certainly needs some time to figure out the zoning angles of all the issues raised and the defenses raised to those issues, which is going to take us some time to figure out, to digest the memorandums that have been provided to us. I do think that the tenants, and certainly the tenant closest, should have the right to be able to enjoy your apartment. I also understand the laws with regard to this business expansion and the use of this patio. And I understand landscaping versus structures as far as encroachments. But the lighting, the music, the hours of operation, all should be consistent and done with a bit of compassion for the fact that this is, there is residential next to this. And I am sincerely hoping that when we next come back, that there has been some sincere and fruitful discussions among the parties, otherwise we will make a decision. Be it a decision that's going to get appealed one way or the other, we will make a decision. But I think you guys can figure it out and if not, we will. And believe me, if someone calls and says we need a couple more weeks to discuss it, you're not going to get any opposition from us because I don't expect you guys to be able to figure it out in two weeks. I know as an attorney, I would have a tough time working out all the, all the ups and downs going on in a very complicated situation. And forget about the subdivision and all that, I can figure that out plenty easy. But this is a community that has residential and business and it is business zone, but they're living together. Obviously, the community is a great supporter of Cagney's. I certainly agree with Counselor Forrest that this is a great operation and a great operator and those are few and far between, believe me. So I'm very hopeful that you guys will come to some type of arrangement that figures it out. And I get it, it's your retirement, I understand all of that and I'm hopeful that you guys will come to something that will work and make it palatable for the tenant, palatable for the operator, palatable for the business owner. And I sincerely hope we come back. The issues have been narrowed down to a couple tiny ones and that more people are smiling than are agreed. So, sorry for my soliloquy, but that's, this was a lot to take in and got some work to do to figure it all out, so. To the parties, is two weeks enough? Do you want four? I would ask for, I currently temporarily serving as a director of an agency north of Boston, very limited, maybe three times, but Friday afternoon is about the only time I have available, so. Counselor? Four, four weeks?
May 9.
May 9?
Yes, we have to. I actually have a conference that night, but I feel like I've shared my.
I think you have. It's, I'll ask the chair, I don't think I'll be able to have a comment, I think we did a lot.
May 9?
May 9.
It's Tuesday.
I do have jury duty.
I think. You're going to say, if they sequester you.
You sequester me.
Well, I think your counsel is well of the two.
Okay, thank you.
So, okay, let's have a motion for me. What's that?
May 9 is fine.
Mr. Chairman, with respect to application Z17-33, Paul Shenet, trustee of P and D Realty Trust, for an appeal of the inability to receive enforcement for the premises number 210-216 Washington Street, Quincy, I make the motion to continue that case to May 9, 2017.
Second. Second.
Who knows, you say nine, I'm in favor?
Nine.
So you guys, four weeks.
Do I understand Mr. Duca will be playing a role in this?
I don't think that's what he said.
I'll be playing a role.
Take a five-minute break.
Thank you.